Recording.
Good to go.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is December the fifth on Monday. It's a special meeting of the Board of Education. Oh, I forgot to say twenty twenty-two for the record. And I think we are just about all here. This is a special and a different format for the types of meetings we typically do. We did one of these back in April on the twenty-sixth. And if you weren't at that meeting, it's always a great idea to go back and revisit that on the town of Wellington's official YouTube page. Look under Board of Education and they're listed chronologically. So April twenty-sixth was the special data meeting where we described a lot of what was there. So that would be wonderful if you've received that, but we're going to follow the same type of format tonight. Where we walk through the presentation after each of the sections of presentations, we will ask for questions. We'll take questions from the audience. If you raise your hand or come on the screen, you can also raise your hand virtually by using the reactions button. And then one of the options is to raise your hand, but this way it would let us know so we can take you off of mute and hear your question. And Anne, can we do a sound check? Can you hear us okay?
Michelle, I'm at a a pageant rehearsal, but I'm here.
Okay, so you're on listening on.
Got it. I'm listening mode. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Okay, so with that, we do not have present to speak on these types of special data meetings because it's included throughout where we have opportunities to ask questions. This is more of a workshop format. So because of that, we're not following the same exact format. We will have time for questions and different points throughout the presentation rather than only at the beginning or the end. It'll also allow for more interaction as opposed to typically when we do present to speak, we do not respond to the comments. We are in listen-only mode at that point, but today we'll have a chance for some questions and answers. So with that, let's get started, Mr. Stevens. If you want to share your screen and jump into the presentation.
And so, Michelle, was I do this because you're a co-host and it's probably, can you just keep your participants?
I will. I'll keep my participant screen and let people in as they come. And if everybody else who's here, if you would just put your phone on mute so that there's no background noise for the recording. Thank you.
Yep, and I cannot see you on my screen. I just minimized you also. If I, if you're waving at me, I won't know or hands up. So I'm gonna trust that that'll go.
I'll manage that part. I'll manage the participants coming in and out and you can.
Perfect, perfect. Thanks so much. So this is our data outcomes and action steps. Where we're at today, this is a lot of this data is the end of twenty-one, twenty-two. And it was not perfect timing, I guess, for for what our scores look like, but the, this was the end week front page of a very significant publication that is out for education. Education Week is, is a, you know, a lot, it's a, it's a magazine, a lot of professional articles in it. It's, it's very well known, and this was the front page. Nations Report Card shows historic drop in math reading. And, you know, the pandemic has smacked national assessment scores back. It's, we're no different. And so we have some work to do. There's some good news. There's some not-so-good news, and we're going to work through that process tonight. We will post this presentation tomorrow, so I'll save it as a PDF. And obviously, we'll upload the, the video tomorrow as well, so you'll have access to the YouTube video for folks that couldn't attend. I know there was a couple of things going on tonight. And also, the, this presentation will be on the, the school website. So without further ado, some of this is, is consistent from what you saw last time. Just a reminder what we're reporting on tonight. We're reporting really on Sback and I ready. Some of our high-stakes testing, but to have a comprehensive student success plan and, and you know, you have to look at a lot of data sources. And so these are the, a lot of the data sources that we're looking at, some of those curriculum assessments and, and the other data is, is really critical too. We always talk about the number of students that are participating in clubs or how many suspensions we have in, in our student discipline data. How many students are in special education? And how many students are leaving special education because they're making their way out of it? So we look at a lot of different data. Tonight, really, the target is around Sback and I ready. And then what are we doing about it? What are, what's our action steps? What's our plan? The first thing I'm going to highlight, and this is new, this is, we didn't talk about this last time, is, is now. I think last year I had said we weren't really seeing that COVID dip, and we have. I think now we're really seeing the same trend locally that the state is seeing and nationally is, is being seen. The NAPE is the Nations Report Card. It's what they use for to identify the Nations Report Card. And the results were, were not good. They can decline significantly compared to two thousand nineteen. And then just the pandemic, just the disruption in how education was happening. The New York Times was reporting that the progress of nine-year-olds erased two decades of work. So where we had come was gone. The other thing nationally, and I'm going to show you a slide about this, that where we are locally is that there was a significant increase in student absenteeism. Think about the, you know, a student that had to quarantine. If you're a close contact, those things significantly impact a student's education. And that's not just Wellington. It's local. It's, it's the state and it's national. And then from the state standpoint, we, the performance in twenty-one, twenty-two is below the three most recent pre-pandemic years. So there's a significant drop. One out of ten schools, I don't know what they did if they, if it was, I'd like to go back to their data just to see if it was connected to, you know, some of the socioeconomic status, but not nine out of ten, nearly nine out of ten school districts saw a significant drop in ELA and math between eighteen, nineteen and that twenty and twenty-one two, two school year. And so that's consistent. This is what I am a little worried about when I saw this information. This is new this year. We didn't show this last time. I went in to look at our data as far as absentee rates because they were high in twenty-one, twenty-two. And this was significant, not only in Wellington. I just pulled districts that were around us in our general area. And what you see here, the seventeen, eighteen column is the number of students who are chronically absent, meaning they missed ten percent or greater of the total number of days that they were enrolled in the school year, and it was for any reason. It could have been vacation. It could have been sick. But you see the number there. So if you're looking at Wellington, we had seventeen students. Four point one percent of our population in seventeen, eighteen missed what we'll call eighteen days or more. That's the ten percent, about the ten percent. When you look at twenty-one, twenty-two, and I didn't go back, this is on the public side. I didn't go back and look at twenty, twenty-one. The asterisk is there because it's, because we're small. It's strange how they do that. I just pulled twenty-one, twenty-two, and you can see we had a hundred, out of four hundred kids, because this does not include pre-K. We had over a hundred kids that missed eighteen days of school last year. To say that's significant is saying it lightly. I mean, it's, 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 that is a lot of days, and that's the minimum. So they missed eighteen days. It very well could have been that they missed twenty-five. And so that was twenty-seven point two percent that of our population that missed eighteen days or more. That's a lot. You can look at some of those others, you know, we're, we're in the same boat. Ashford was in the same boat. They're, they're at thirty-two percent. You look at someone like Wyndham, forty-six percent of their kids missed eighteen or days, eighteen days or more. And it's across the board. You see Mansfield was at seventeen point six. There's a couple of strange outliers, and I would like to see their data. I'm not sure if they reported it differently than other districts, but the majority of districts, eleven, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-seven, you know, twenty-four. This is, it's an issue. You can imagine when you are talking about learning early reading skills or a progression of, of a lesson in a middle school in a math class where you, you know, you, you miss a certain number of days. It's very challenging to to catch up. So I, I put that first. That was the first brief section I wanted to talk about tonight was just the trends and what we're seeing. And just to show you this, this absent absenteeism data to show you that I think this played into our scores as well and also played into other folk's scores. Any questions about any of the, the, the national trends, local trends, or the absenteeism trends?
Donna, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure if this is the right spot to ask these questions. So if it is.
We're going to focus only on the absenteeism and the national trends for the first piece. We're going to do questions throughout all of the rest of the, the data throughout.
So for the national trends, when we're looking at, at this, is there a number where if a student, like I just remember when, when Rachel was in high school, if there was unexcused absences, there, there's a cutoff where you have to. There's some sort of makeup, whether you stay after, whether there's an extra workshop or a summer school or whatever. Do we have a cut? I mean, I know it's, I know if you're talking K through eight, but do we have a cutoff? And if we do, what is it?
So there is no cutoff by a number of days. That's something that you consider, can consider. The research really does not support holding a student back. But obviously, you need to have mechanisms in place like tutoring or, you know, making sure. And, and this is a simple example I always give, but when you're doing a, a mini lesson in class, we'll say we're doing a reading lesson. And I have four stations, and I do the mini lesson, and the students break off to the four stations, and I'm running one of those stations. I might have that student sit in my group two or three times to make sure they catch up to where they were, and they're not, they're getting direction instruction. There is no number. The number that the state says is that parents can keep their children home for ten days for whatever reason. After the tenth absence, they have to have a doctor's note or it's, it's unexcused. And so when you start talking about eighteen days, and again, when we were having close contacts and had, you know, a student had to be out for, for five to ten days, it's a lot, but there is no specific cutoff as far as needing to stay back or make up work. It's, it's done on an individual basis based upon, you know, that student.
Donna, did you have additional questions?
Not for this.
Not for this section. Okay, Herb, I see your hands up. You have to come off, you have to come off mute though, Herb. There we go.
Phil, in seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty, twenty-one. Well, are these the same youngsters that were absent each year or is a different set of youngsters that were absent?
So we track it. We have student assistance teams and, and attendance teams at both schools. They look at students that are missing school regularly. In this scenario, the majority of these kids in that twenty-seven point two percent were out because they were either quarantining or isolating or were sick. And so we know when, because we have to report to the DCF, when Department of Children and Families, when it hits a certain number of, you know, a parent's not sending their child to school, and we've reached out and tried things, we have to report it. So typically, it's not always the same student. No, the outlier years, I would, I bet twenty, twenty-one would be, you know, a similar outlier year. But definitely twenty-one, twenty-two, those students were quarantining or isolating or sick, the majority of them. There might be a couple in there that were just not going to school or, you know, sometimes what happens is a family go, will go on a seven-day vacation. The student will miss five days of school. And then they get sick, and so now they're out another five days, and then they have to quarantine or something else. Those days add up fast. And it's, it's significant.
Do we provide them with materials for study?
Oh, yeah. Yes, definitely. I mean, we do, we do everything in our power to help them, you know, to catch up. But, you know, when you talk about that number of days, it's challenging, especially some of those students are, you know, in, in an intervention and, and receiving support. So it just gets them that much further behind, and it breaks up the, you know, that whole routine of school.
So twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, with a hundred youngsters out that number of days, what kind of intervention can we possibly serve with that number?
That's the catch-up now, Herb. That's the tutoring. That's a small group instruction. That's the, you know, making sure that we have proper interventions for kids. And that's where the growth model is really important to make sure that we're meeting those, you know, because to catch up our, and this is not just Wellington, you have to now make up more than a year's growth for students to be able to get them where they need to be. And that is across, you know, not just Wellington, but everywhere because of the, the, the data. I mean, again, if you start looking at those numbers across these districts, it's significant.
And we'll certainly talk more about possible interventions throughout this meeting as we're going. Because this absenteeism is an important consideration. It's not the only one, however. Some kids can be absent and catch up pretty easily, and there are kids who are coming every day who still need more help. So Arthur Christiansen, I see you have your hand up if you can come on in. There you go.
Uh, thank you. Can everybody hear me? I'm in the car, so I want to make sure that I'm heard.
We can. We're only speaking right now. We're talking questions specifically on absenteeism and the national broader context.
Yep, no problem. But the only thing I, I want to bring this up now because Phil reminded me, he just mentioned to Donna that there's research that shows that holding a student back is not effective. And I've heard such things along the lines with natural light and everything, and I'm just wondering, Phil, if you'd be willing to share the research that you see or the research that's given to you publicly, because I'd like to take a look at a lot of this stuff that you say. Absolutely. Looking into that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we, there's a lot of research on retention and the negative outcomes that happen long-term. On a rare occasion, I think it works, but on the majority, it does not. But I can definitely pull that research and share it. We can actually put it with this presentation.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, no more hands still, so you can move on with the presentation.
Okay, so we're going to jump into the Sback section now. And so something that I did this year that was different was I started thinking about all of the movement we've had with students. And when I say movement, a lot of new students in, a lot of students have left. It's, it's, I think with the housing market is, you know, had an impact on that. I wanted to see, we talk about cohorts, and so when we talk about cohorts, I'm going to go to the grade eight area down here. This sixteen, seventeen column where it says year one, first year testing right next to the number eight. That group of students, they would be in third grade there, seventeen, eighteen, fourth, eighteen, nineteen, fifth. You can go all the way across and twenty-one, twenty-two, that would be their eighth grade year. I was curious to know the students that remain with us for all of those years. Are they performing at the same level of our Sback scores? Are they outperforming? Are they underperforming? What does it look like? Are students benefiting from being in Wellington for numerous years? I didn't look at the third, fourth, and fifth because they didn't, they just tested in twenty, twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. Not a lot of trends, but I did pull the numbers overall. So just to see, if you look across this, year one in fourth grade, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-nine out of thirty-two students tested again in twenty-one, twenty-two, ninety-one percent. When you go to that fifth grade row, same thing, you drop a little bit, but forty-one out of forty-six were here. When you go down to sixth grade, you see a, just a regular decline here. In eighteen, nineteen, those kids were third graders. And when you go to twenty-one, twenty-two, they were sixth graders. And so that means forty-one out of fifty kids are the same group of kids that were here in eighteen, nineteen. Makes sense. The reason I'm showing this is because when I looked at this, it was interesting data. There was a couple groups of kids, and I don't have the numbers on screen, in several instances that between math and ELA, students who were with us actually on several instances outperformed, and I'll say significantly, sometimes up to ten percent higher on Sback score. So we were at forty-five percent this year for one of our scores. This group of kids, one of these groups of kids could have performed fifty-five percent. So it's interesting, the kids moving in, the kids moving out, but really the point for me was I want to know if the kids that remain with us, are we really preparing them? And they were doing better. Is there still work to be done? Absolutely. So it's just, it was an interesting way to look at this. But it was, you know, only seventy-six percent of the kids that were with us last year's eighth graders were with us as third graders all the way through. So we're, we're calling this a cohort analysis, but know that there are students over time who have moved in and out. I am going, hopefully Aaron can talk. I'm going to move this now to the cohort analysis for math. Aaron's under the weather, so hopefully she can talk. If not, I will take it over.
I am here and I have that. So here what you're looking at is the Sback, as Phil said, for math in a cohort analysis, set up in a cohort analysis. As, I'm not sure if he knows, but Sback has four levels. The level four is exceeding grade expectations. Level three is meeting grade level expectations. Two is approaching grade level expectations, and level one is a real expectations not met. And so what the number here in the twenty-one, twenty-two column or the numbers you see here are the percentage of students at or above grade level, so level three or four. So you will, as you look at these scores, you will, as, again, as Phil mentioned, there has been a significant decline since pre-COVID in math, math percentages nationwide as well as at the state. And you can see that too, if you compare our data either year to pre-COVID in eighteen, nineteen. However, we do, we do think that that's, you know, naturally and actually research is telling us that the hand math, that concrete level of learning mathematics instruction was really missed when we had to teach online or not be able to use materials because of COVID. So that has significantly impacted scores. And this, but this, and I do want to also draw your attention. We're going to talk about growth model in a little bit after we go through this percentage of achievement levels. But the state is definitely emphasizing growth models over achievement levels for part, for, for part of that reason that we were just talking about in terms of knowing that the score is dipped and growth being more individualized, knowing that kids are reaching their full capacity if we focus on the growth. So that is what they, we do emphasize.
And Lisa is going to do the language arts section?
Yes. Okay, so similarly to what Aaron just described, you see the, these percentages are for students at level three or four. So again, if you look at those numbers, they're significantly much less than, than what, less than the math scores. But the gaps in early reading skills due to COVID are exceptionally clear, particularly in the performance of our fourth and fifth graders. And Wellington and state data show that COVID had a significant impact again on our Sback scores. But we're, we're excited to see following years because we've started the new language arts curriculum and the implementation of the science of, of reading, including brand-new phonics units. So our hope is, you know, these scores are going to potentially climb. And it might take a while because this is, you know, a part of change theory that we always talk about, you know, how long it takes for new curriculum to take effect. So again, the, the state is focusing on growth, not necessarily achievement, and, and we'll talk about that more in a little bit. But, you know, as you can see, that this is unfortunate, but we're really hoping that in the future, you know, these scores will, will continue to climb.
Thanks. So in our action plan addresses this, I think the, some of the work that we're going to talk about in the end tonight directly addresses this. And again, this is, we're not alone in this. I had a conversation with the Mansfield Superintendent, and they're, they're seeing the same challenges across the board. The other thing I was going to say is we, for the way the state has always looked at this, they report out the number of students or the percentage of students at three or higher. We also get the breakdown of all levels, and so we can look at students, if, if their data matches where we think we should be or where a student, you know, is a predictor, like if we're looking at Phil Stevens, he's in a seventh grade student, and he's got all A's, his I-ready scores are off the, the charts. All his curriculum assessments are great, and then he does terrible on Sback. We always scratch our head and go, why? And so those are some of the things that we, we look at and try and figure out. Did I blow it off? Or were the questions different? We're always looking at those things too. When we start talking about the growth model, this is really the, the way the state wants everyone to look at scores. And, and really the purpose is, again, to identify the average percentage of student growth based upon their scale score. So and there's a really specific reason why, and I'm going to start with student C because student C's score of twenty-five, forty and twenty-five, forty-five over here in twenty, twenty-one could be a level four, the highest. But they didn't grow a bunch. And so the state wants to make sure every student is growing to their potential. And so when you look back and what they, what they do is they compare the two. So scale score of twenty-four, twenty here. They have identified a target growth, and they said, we want this student A to grow by sixty-nine points. They went to twenty-four, seventy, which is only fifty, and so they only got seventy-two percent of their targets. And what the state does is they look at what your percentage of target achieved in is, it's not the percentage of students who achieve their targets. It's the percentage of, percentage of target achieved. And so this is just the example for, so you understand it. What they use is they use this, these charts here. There's one for ELA. And there's one for math, and I'm going to give you this example here. Is again, if you look at a student grade in year one, we'll go down to fifth grade. So if you go to level two, which is almost directly in the middle of the page, this person here is in fifth grade. They were scored a two thousand four hundred and ninety-two. That was their scale score. What the state has identified is they want to see that student grow forty-four points. And if they grow forty-four points, they met a hundred percent of their targets. That's how it gets, you know, done. If they only scored thirty-three, they get a percentage. If it's twenty-two, they get a percentage. And so every area, every student, year to year, gets a target for how much we want them to grow. Now, why that's important is because of the next slide. And so this is going to be, Mary Kay is going to speak about this.
Um, so what this is showing us is the percentage of the target that has been achieved by the students. So it's, it's not the percentage of students, but it's the percentage of the target. And as you can see here, we're actually doing fairly well in comparison to the state. Our students are making growth in all areas. In science, they're at sixty-eight point four, which is above where the state is. They are at sixty-one point four in the state, so we're well above that. In math, we're a little bit lower than we should be, but we're still doing very well at sixty point nine for our growth. Our math, though, seventy-two point three. Um, you know, it means that we have that percentage of the target has been achieved by students in that particular area. So that, that shows that it's the growth that the kids are making in, from where they started to when they are done. So even if they're at a high level, they're making good growth. If they're at a lower level, it means that they are, they're making those strides as necessary.
And so this was the eighteen, nineteen report. The date's not wrong. This is where the state had completed a waiver, and they did a waiver again this year. So they're not calculating the overall accountability index. But what they are doing is they did give us these percentages, so we know where, where we were eighteen, nineteen for growth. You know, where, where we're with our target compared to twenty-one, twenty-two. And so that's what you see here in these comparisons. So our growth in this for ELA, that's sixty-nine, nine, the blue is what we were for twenty-one, twenty-two.
There are hands up. I don't know if we want to take the questions now, Michelle, or what, if you want to wait?
No, we're going to wait until we finish all the Sback.
Okay.
So Lisa, this is yours?
Yeah, so I'm going to speak to the center accountability index. So you, you noticed on the previous slide that there are twelve indicators. So Phil very helpfully blocked out, blacked out the indicators that don't apply, that are not applicable to the elementary school. So on this slide, you can see pretty clearly that our ELA academic growth was far below what we would have hoped and below the state average. Uh what we would have hoped and below the state average um at forty-one point eight percent. Um so the math, though, almost twice as much, eighty-two point four percent. Um but again, that's above the state average. So um that's, that's kind of what we're looking at in terms of, you know. What our growth needs to be. Um and again, I think it's really important to point out that our new ELA curriculum. Has a very strong focus on the science of reading and that focus on phonics. Um and all of our teachers, all the general education and special education teachers are training in letters. Um which will really boost the, the reading instruction and how we approach the teaching of reading to kids and. Even preschool through uh fourth grade.
So when we look at these accountability index, again, they didn't do the full uh picture for us. Um we would have gotten knocked down on our ELA performance, but we would have um. And same thing for math, honestly, but we would have picked up points on the math academic growth. And not done as well on the um ELA academic growth. We would have again, got knocked down on chronic absenteeism. So. I think they're eventually going to go back to this full accountability index, but we have a pretty good picture. We know where we, you know, where we think we would fall. You know, it's pretty clear right there. The eighty-two point fours is um good, very good growth. Uh whereas the ELA is, is just not. When you go to hall, sorry, this is the um. Just the picture of it. At least I don't know if you wanna add anything to that. This is just the overall, there's not much more to add.
Yeah, and again, this is not the percentage of students who achieve their target. Uh this is the percentage of targets achieved by all students. So if you see, you can look pretty clearly at the breakdown between the school, district and state.
Yeah, and the celebration is the math. Obviously, the um target that needs work is, is ELA. We're almost done with the section, so we'll get to questions in a minute. So MK, you wanna do the HMS?
Yep, um as Lisa stated, um you know, this, this is the, the, the blue numbers. Are the numbers that we have achieved in twenty-one, twenty-two. As you can see in science, uh we're above where we were, we're sixty-eight point four. In ELA academic growth, we're above where we were at fifty-three point five. And in math, we're above where we were at seventy-two point three. So in terms of growth, I think, you know, from what it shows, we're. Uh doing, we're achieving and doing what we need to do. Um obviously, we'd love to see these numbers higher. But uh they're, they're trending in the right direction.
Yeah, I think particularly the ELA for me um is the one where I would like to see that significantly higher.
And uh as Lisa stated, you know, with our letters training, with us learning about the science of reading. You know, with Lucy Cockens redoing her, um you know, taking a look at her curriculum and showing places where it had had gaps. Um we are doing our best to make sure that those things are done. And as um. Lisa also stated, when you do anything and there's change, there's going to be a slight dip. Here, this, this um particular slide shows the numbers I just mentioned. But in a, in a pictorial graph, it makes it that much easier for you to see.
Yeah. Okay, questions about any S back growth, overall scores?
Donna? You'll have to come up.
Um, okay, so if you could go back to the method. Level ranges and growth targets. Um.
This?
No, keep going. I think that's it. Whoops, one more forward that one. Okay, my question is, they mentioned. Grade five. The kids that are in, under the level two. Um. Count with the four high.
Yep.
If a student is in that range. And they earn the whole forty-four target points.
Yep.
Will that move them out of level two and into level three? Like is. When, when they give the kids these targets, are they, if they meet the target, are they ever going to get to the point where they meet the expectations? Or are they gonna be chronically behind?
So they're targeting the growth that they wanna see that's reasonable in that year. Um but you're not, you're correct, you're not always going to move levels. But if you, their intention is over the period of time, if you are making that growth that's on there for the target. That you will get to that level where you want students to be. Um but just cuz you score, you know, if you get those forty points. Or forty-four points in this grade five, does not necessarily mean that you're going to get to the next level three.
That, that's, I understand as far as, you know, if you have a kid who's woefully, woefully behind, you know, like they're a level one. Student. To get them up to a level three is gonna require a lot of work on, on their.
Um, correct.
But I'm, I'm concerned that the way the system is designed, that. They're always gonna be. Struggling to catch up and, and, and not hitting the mark. Um and what that's gonna do to them. As things go on. Um so that's one, one question. Um the other thing. See if I can find it quickly. So when um, if you go to the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen HMS. Accountability index. Okay, so. If we're looking at this. The, if we're comparing, like the, the science is, ours is sixty-eight point four.
Right.
But if we're looking at the state average of eighty-five.
That's from eighteen nineteen.
Okay, do, do you have the state, state numbers for um? Twenty-one, twenty-two that could be added?
So the science performance index for all students for us was sixty-eight point four.
Right.
And the state average was sixty-one point four.
Okay, so that's encouraging that our kids, when you look at the state.
Yes.
Um it's not good that the state fell so much, but it's encouraging that our kids didn't fall. How about um the ELA? Um line two A.
So uh two, yeah, yeah, academic growth was for twenty-one, twenty-two was fifty-three point five. And we were below the state average of sixty point four. And then the math academic growth, we were at seventy-two point three and the state average was sixty-five point two. So you don't see that on here because I didn't, I didn't go back to change to eighteen nineteen. What I just did was just target, so you can see where we were. Um.
I, I just think it gives a little fuller picture. Cuz we can see what, how our students compared to the state in the eighteen nineteen numbers.
Yeah.
I, I, I just think it gives a fuller picture. So I don't know if you can add those, excuse me, um on. To the district, the C, CES, and that when you send out the PDF, I think it'll be helpful for the readers. I think that's it for me now. Thank you.
Uh Arthur Christensen, you have your hand up? Sorry, Arthur, you're on mute.
Yeah, I apologize. I was tapping my screen. Uh I just had a question and a, and a comment. Um and I, I had to re-enter the meeting a few times because it was messing up my audio. So I, I just wanna know. When you, with the growth index, when you say it applies to each individual student, is there a formula that is just applied in general to students of a certain? Uh level of achievement, or I mean, is every student individually what that? Again, if you talked about this, you can tell me to listen to the recording, I'm fine with that. I'm, I, again, I missed a little bit. Um.
Yeah, it's on there, Arthur. So this, it's, it's tied to the growth targets and the growth targets are identified by the state.
No, I, I get the targets. What I mean is you mentioned that each individual student is. Almost has their own target.
Right.
So how is that target determined for four hundred kids, I would say? I guess that's my question.
No, it's automatic. So when we get our S back scores, we get. Thirty columns of data. Um you know, are, are they identified special ed? Are they in a, a minority group? Um you know, grade level, there's all sorts of data that comes across with it. And one of the things they do is they give you the, the, the scale score for that student and you can figure out what they need to do for next year by applying it to this grid. So we know what their growth is. Now, again, I think this was Donna's point and I think I, I say the same thing, like. You know, if you're not gonna go from a level one to a, a two or a two to a three. Um I wanna see significantly enough growth that's gonna get you. Uh on a good trajectory to get to the, the level where we want you to be. Um and that's the challenge. Um because some of these are, you know, some kids miss a level by a question or two and it's two points. Some kids are a hundred points away. And so, you know, you wanna make sure we know where students are. Um and so we know what, you know, what, what that number is for every student based upon their scale score.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Um uh someone with the initials A C has your hand up. If you would come off mute and identify yourself, please, for the record.
Hi, Michelle, this is Amy Cook.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
Go ahead and ask your question.
I have some questions around the HMS accountability, especially around math. Um I'm just having a hard time kind of piecing together the, the seventy-two percent, right, which seems like it's definitely a positive. With the publicly available data that's on EdSite, right? So if you look out there. You, you know, in fifth, sixth and seventh grade last year, we have over twenty percent of students who are scoring a one. In math and you have over forty percent of students in eighth grade who are graduating from willing to public schools that scored a one. You also have less than forty-five percent of students in ea- in any of those grades that either met or exceeded. So is it just that the scores were that horrific and even more horrible the year before? That they've made some significant growth? Or I, I, I'm just having a hard time putting, because the data that, when I look at all of the data, to me, it's very, very poor. And how we could be meeting the state is just not adding up for me.
No, and it's, again, it goes back to that target, Amy. So you might have a, a whole group of students that don't move at all. Um and they stay at that same level and it's not good. Or you might have us, uh the group, same group of students where um they achieve their targets. And that's where this percentage comes from. So you could still be at ones and twos, but if you met your target. That's what the state is looking. So last year's, those scores, you know, and again, this is, you might not move a level. So a student that was at a one, if they needed to score fifty points higher and they did, and they met their a hundred percent of their target. That helped us. So that's really what the number is showing. And so. I, I mean, I agree with you. The numbers i- in the, you know, what we'll call in the approaching and the. Uh what is it, below grade level, that whatever that last category is titled, um it's not enough. This is just how the state is looking at it from the standpoint of. Are you, are those students making growth or are they just stuck where they are and, and? I don't know how they came up with their forty-four or their fifty-two or their thirty-three. That's what we have to go off of.
But I think, Amy, you, you, you picked up on something that this is, these are two different measures and we have to look at both of them to tell more of the story. And one of them is. That even if you're making target, if you're still at a level one, it means we as a district have a lot more that we have to do. And that we're not expecting that it's gonna be fixed in a year or even two. But that it means we may have to invest more money in interventions and help to really make a difference, especially with those numbers that are looking so much worse. Um post-COVID. We may need some uh, 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 short. Term, meaning not short, short, but a couple of years, really more intensive intervention to make up for. The losses that have occurred over time.
Yeah, and that's where the comments about decades of, of growth gone. And, and I, I mean, this is the Amy's point is if you look at the seventh grade and seventeen, eighteen for ELA. And again, I'm not figuring out if they're in the same cohort or not, but it's cohort analysis. You know, that group was at a sixty-six percent. In twenty-one, twenty-two, they were at forty-seven. That's not good. Like, we need to do better in that. We recognize that. We're just sharing what the state is telling us to look at, to make sure their students are making the growth. Um in some areas, they are, in some areas, they're not. But. I mean, anybody can look at these scores and go, we have a lot of work to do. Um and again, we're not alone in this. Um but we have a lot of work to do when, and I, I said this in convocation, when, when one of our two, you know, one out of. Two students is, is what I would, in my comparison here, say is not reading proficiently. Um that is really alarming. And so our staff knows we have work to do, our administrators know we have work to do. Um and I think that the plan that we have in place on the last page for the action plan um. Addresses a lot of those concerns.
Right, and we will get to that. Um Herb has a question for right now, though, on the S back scores.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, Herb, you were on mute.
Well, we have these statistics and we know, and I've identified students who haven't met the goals that we're setting. But do we have an individual plan for those who are not achieving? Our goals? And uh how, how are we going to handle that?
Yeah, so those, again, when you, we take a whole um, you know, set of data. Maybe we take an I-ready score, we'll take an, an S back score, we'll take a teacher observation, we'll. We'll take student work, we'll review it all, we'll look at attendance. And we compare them all together and, and, you know, is there a common pattern? Um you know, Phil's performing at this level or is it all over the board and try and figure that out? Um and when there's a common pattern for, you know. What I'll say, a struggling learner, um there's intervention for that. And those students are targeted. For either the wind block or the learning lab at center school. Um and they're, you know, targeted to receive.
Getting individual attention.
They are. Yep, it's not always one-to-one, but it's, they have targeted plans that someone else might not have because they're, they're doing okay. And again, this gets back to Michelle's point earlier that. I, I could name, you know, some students off the top of my head here that could miss fifteen days of school. Uh and just are super strong academically and could come in and pick it up in no time at all. Where, or I could, you know, name five kids that, you know, would miss some school and struggle and it just puts them that further behind and it's really hard to make those times up. So. Um it's a balance, but each student has their individual plan um that they're working on, yes.
And we have the resources to do that?
I would say um.
We have to, you know, put some more money in that area.
So I will tell you that one of the probably biggest uh. Pieces of feedback that I hear, um in, in MK is probably gonna do a cheerleading dance in a moment. Um we do not have a math interventionist, a specific math interventionist at Hall School. We are using a paraprofessional. Um and that is probably the one that's the most um. I think the challenge is, you know, the number of kids that are struggling right now because of COVID, we are, you know. There's a lot of reteaching that needs to happen, a lot of catching up. So, you know, a fourth grade teacher gets their kids and they're teaching third grade skills first. Um you know, and trying to do both at the same time, and that's just not easy. Um I would say that's, I mean, admin team, you're welcome to chime in and say more than that, but I think that is one of the most common comments I get. Is not having a um, a certified math interventionist.
So the budget coming up, you, you may have some, some recommendations.
I don't know that yet cuz we're still building it, but I, I know that, that has been a conversation already.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Nice way to preview next month's meetings, Herb. But good, always good for us to be putting the links and connecting the dots. Uh seeing no other hands right now, let's move on to the next section and then we will have time for more questions again after this next section.
So this is, this one's quick. This is just science, Marcia.
Yes, that is me. So the next generation science standard assessment, this assessment is given to grades, students in grades five and eight. The first assessment for the whole state was given in nineteen eight or nineteen, nineteen eighteen. Uh twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So you'll see that the fifth graders took that sixty-three percent. We're at level three or above. Uh this is not as assessment that we can really look at cohort at this point, except for. The fifth grade who took that in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. They're also the eighth graders who took that in twenty-one and twenty-two. The fifty-one percent. So that's the only group that we can look at any trends with. Um the rest of them have only taken it either in first or fifth grade or eighth grade. Um we are addressing this.
Um, we are addressing this area and we'll talk about it a little bit more further by implementing the full year science. At HMS and utilizing the Open Sayad, uh, materials program. So we'll definitely talk about that a little bit more later on.
One of the things I was disappointed this is, and if I, if it turns up somewhere, I, I would, uh, share it with you. Last year I was able to share with you the breakout of the three areas on the assessment. Um, and show you strengths in, in areas that need improvement. They did not, uh, share that information this year. And, and so that's a. Something that we have into the state to ask for more data, because if you're just getting a number, uh, and you don't have that information, that's, that's. Just not helpful. Questions about the next gen science?
I'm not seeing any hands, so we can move on to the next section, and if somebody has it, we can ask it after the next.
All right. Aaron, you're on.
All right, so this chart probably looks familiar. It's our I ready chart. Um, again, both I ready charts that we're going to be looking at are grouped by cohort. So if, as you look across, you can watch the kids. Um, you can see the second graders who went to third grade and into fourth grade in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, I ready is, these scores are grouped into three levels, so green being at or above grade level, yellow being, um, approaching grade level. And then red significantly or below grade level, significantly below red level. Um, which is the red. And you'll see as you look at this chart in. I'm going back to twenty-one, twenty-two, because last time you saw this, you didn't see the spring scores. So looking at twenty-year, twenty-one, twenty-two as an entire year. Um, you'll see that the students who were significantly below level, the red, the red category. Um, those numbers all decreased through the year, which is great. That's what we want to see. You want to see less kids and significantly below. Um, and the number in the green or the number of students performing at or above grade level, uh, was significant, um, all increased, um, in math. So that was, uh. That's what we want to see. We would like to see, um, achievement levels higher than what we're seeing there at the end of the year, but it's the right direction. Um, except for grade seven, grade seven's the one grade, um. That, uh, the, oh wait. Sorry, that's a different statistic. Take that back. Um, fall scores, but now looking forward to fall. Uh, you'll see that there is what we call a summer slide. So even though, for instance, um. And here's a good significant one, second grade. And remember, these, the second graders in the spring were scoring fifty-three percent, uh, at or above grade level. And then when they came back in the fall, fourteen percent. So you'll see there is, you'll see that's pretty typical as we change years to see that kind of summer slide. Um, but we expect that when we see the winter scores in January, those should. Increase, uh, kind of back up to where they were. And then overall, an average of fifty-two, so the end of last spring, an average of fifty-two percent of our students in district, uh, tested. Between second, second and eighth grade were on or above grade level. So overall, as an average, we're looking around fifty-two percent of our kids. Uh, our students scoring at or above grade level, um, for math. And. Next chart, uh, wait. And so here. This chart is the, so I ready, this is, we were talking about growth, growth, um, being the state. Kind of focus, making sure that students are achieving their fullest potential and starting to close those gaps. This is I ready's growth chart. So we, we shared this again last year, but I'm going to reiterate that there's, there's, there's the annual typical growth. So that's the growth per student, and these are individualized per student in, in I ready, which is an adaptive program. Um. The, the annual typical growth is that to, in order to maintain kind of that. Closing the gap and what the student should progress, whether they're achieving high or low. Um, you know, the lower level achievements, their annual typical growth is, is what every student gets. Their stretch growth. Um, it's kind of that, a little bit, that zone of proximal development, a little bit outside their reach, which is going to, like, especially if they're significantly below. We, we really want them to start getting their stretch growth to try to close that gap. Um, at a faster, at a faster rate. Uh, than if, and so you'll see here, there's two bars, or there's two sections. Under annual typical growth, you have the progress median. So for instance, if you look at grade three, you'll see there's a hundred and four percent, uh, is that median of students making. Progress towards them making their annual typical growth goal. And this is end of year scores. And then you'll see in the same level of grade three, that's fifty-seven, sorry, I have to get close to my screen. Fifty-seven percent of the students actually met their annual typical growth. So that's a percentage of students who met the growth. The reason that you'll see a little bit different and so this. Sometimes, um, may seem a little bit counterintuitive, um, in this way, but. Um, because if, if a student, let's say, go back to that grade three, there might be some students who made more than their, like, they're making their stretch growth. Um, or they're making a, a really enormous amount of growth, so it'll kind of skew that median to be over a hundred percent, even though maybe not a hundred percent of students actually met. Their, their growth goal or growth target rather in this. So just to understand why, why the progress median might be more than a hundred, but you don't see a hundred students at. Uh, making that level. Um. And I think that's. So, and again, if we're looking at this mid-year, what you're looking at mid-year in the progress median bar, you want to see fifty percent. And, um, you know, we were well over, well over fifty when we look at this mid-year last year. So we are definitely seeing the growth. And, and which you'll see, this is what translates into that accountability index, growth number, which we are talking about being higher too. So you'll see these all kind of connect to, kind of connect the dots there.
And we don't have our growth numbers yet. The, when they take the second test, we'll have their second, their growth for this year, correct?
Correct, correct. In January, we'll get those, the growth targets. Um, and see how they're going towards them. Here's reading. This data, um, demonstrates a decrease also with who, in students who are looking at twenty-one, twenty-two, who are significantly below grade, grade level. And an increase in students performing at or above grade levels, so that green group. So that was nice to see, you know, the increase in the students, um, at or above, and the decrease, um, all around in the significantly below. Again, very similar trend, you'll see the summer slide from spring to fall. So you'll see that those, the students performing. Um, at or above grade level might have, uh, decreased since the spring. But again, that's what we call the summer slide, um, and we should see those go back up in winter. And, and in this, taking the average of the end of twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we had, are the average for the district for grades two through eight. Uh, students who tested was fifty-three percent of students at or above grade level, um, was the average when you take all the. All the grade levels in this. Um. In reading as well. And the last chart. So again, very similarly to the math, you'll see here the percentage of students, uh, meeting their. Annual typical growth goal, goal, or their stretch goal. Um, I'd like to point out grade two, because you'll see there, um. Or sorry, not grade two, the one underneath, grade three. Uh, even almost fifty percent of their students even matched their growth goal with seventy percent of students meeting. Uh, their, their annual, their annual typical growth with forty-eight percent in either stretch goal, which, which, that's great. That's a very high percentage actually of stretch goal. Because if you look down below, it says, uh, typically it's twenty-five to thirty-five percent of students, you're, you see meet stretch goals. So anything over that thirty-five percent in stretch goal is actually a very significant. Growth. For, for those students.
Okay, questions about any of the I ready data?
Donna, if you want to come off mute.
Yes, okay, um, if. Phil, if you could go back to the math I ready data, yes, that one. Right, so. I just want to make sure I understand, because I thought in the past. That the fall, winter, spring tests. Were looking at. What percentage of the information that the kids needed to know by the end of the year did they already know? And so, um. When you look at the fall number and then the winter number and then the spring number, the spring number is. Where they should be for the entire year, but that they were being tested on the same stuff throughout. It was, is that correct?
Um. I, I, I'm, so I'm, if I understand you correctly, I would say no. Um, because it's, so I ready is an adaptive program. So it will adjust depending on how students are performing, and they don't necessarily get the exact same information. So they're not taking the exact same test.
Not necessarily the exact same test, but I thought that when they tested them in the fall. It was based upon. The information that they should know for the entire year. And so having. Um, nineteen percent, like of the fourth years, only nineteen percent. Be at or above grade level isn't surprising because they haven't necessarily been exposed to the data. Um, and the information, but by the time they've hit spring test, they should have been exposed to enough of. The grade for math stuff to do well. So am I thinking about, was there a different test, Michelle, that we were looking at?
No, you, you're, you're right. Your question is. In the fall test for fourth graders, are they being tested on what a fourth grader needs to know at the end of the year? To have been on grade level as a fourth grader at the end of the year, or are they adjusting it and giving it kind of like? Three and a half or a beginning fourth grader?
Oh. So, so yes, so yes. The answer is, they, so there, it is, um, oh no, I'm sorry. Background noise. Um. So yes, there, it is testing fourth grade skills. Um, in the fall. You guys are there, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I feel like I, a couple of people froze on my screen.
At that point in the year, though, Aaron, right? It, it's, is it end of the year or it, when they take it in the fall, it's. Where they expect them to be at that point in the year?
They present kids with questions. And the, the student answers the questions. And if the, the student can continue and the test adapts to what the student can do. And then, or the test adjusts, if the student doesn't answer questions correctly, it goes back and tries to re, it, it re. Introduces a question in a different way, and maybe it tries to go at the standard in a different way. Because students can test beyond their grade level as well. On the I ready test. So it presents students with standards in a continuum. And then it stops when the student no longer is able to successfully answer the questions.
So I guess what I'm trying to get to is if they're using. If you're testing a kid in the fall. On what they, on. On the fourth grade material. And. They fall in a green slot. Then in the winter. They still fall in the green spot, and in the spring, they're in the green spot. Then, when they go to fifth grade. Aaron was talking about the, the loss over the summer. Have. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, because I, I thought in the past. I think Michelle explained it better. Could you say it again, Michelle?
Yeah, I'll find out for you, Donna. I, I know what you're asking. You're asking is, is, so when that second grader took the, or third grader, we'll call it, took the test in twenty-two, twenty-three. This year. Is this for a fall expectation? Or is it the end of third year, grade expectations? That's what we're, the question is, and I don't.
Is it the same expectation for all three tests for one grade level? Is it the same expectation, or is it prorated?
So in front of me right now, I have the I ready, and it says, um. So it's for the norming, it's gives, uh, data ranges. So beginning for fall, beginning of the school year to November fifteenth, so. I'm. Assume, so based on that information, because, and this is, I kind of thought it was because they give you cutoffs for each different one. So it sounds like it's. I want to look further into this because it almost sounds like it's a mix. It almost sounds like it's a grade level test, but it is cutoffs between where they're supposed to be. Um, but I'll have to look into that further.
Okay, that's, that's what I suspect the answer in is, Aaron, is that there, it, it, it's, it's, as an adaptive test, there is some fine tuning, that it's not, it's not a blunt instrument. But it's not perfectly, you know, accurately. Prorated in a way that we can say, oh, they're exactly where they need to be at the middle of the year, because it's the middle of the year.
Because I was comparing, like, I just took. The spring of twenty, twenty-one, twenty, sorry, twenty-twenty-one. And said, okay, at the end of the next year, the spring of twenty-one, twenty-two, how did, how did these? How do our numbers look? Are more people? Getting in, you know, is our, our reds going down and our greens going up? Um, and then when I looked at the fall of twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm saying, okay, those numbers don't look so great in green. But if you're testing somebody in the fall on stuff. That they may not have been exposed to, the fact that they don't know it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. So that's what I was trying to figure out. So yeah, so if we could get a bit more explanation.
Clarification on that, yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any others with questions? Okay, then let's move on.
So this is our, our last slide, um. And. I would. Say that there's not significant changes here. I think we have. Um, created a plan here that to address, just curriculum-wise where we're at. And, um, providing professional development. So we have this, you know, the action steps broken into three things and. Curriculum instruction, targeted instruction for students, and then high-quality professional development. Um, and so in that curriculum instruction, the, the development of all of our curriculum materials and things that we've been. Putting forward to the board and approval, they just looked at, um, the, the curriculum committee just looked at some science materials. Um. That work and the assessments that we're pulling together. Are going to provide a significant amount of consistency for us and help teachers with scope and sequence, meaning. Uh, if I'm a third grade teacher and I have a student come into my classroom, I know what they've already had. Um, and some of that has been inconsistent in the past. So. Um, I think the work that we're doing in a curric- curriculum right now is really important. Um, I will say the math and literacy coaches this year. Um, supporting the implementation of that new curriculum, they're out modeling lessons, they are out, um, you know, watching teachers teach and. Helping them, um, prep new materials, and so they know how to, uh, deploy. What we're asking them to, to, to implement. Um, and so their, their role is critical in this process right now. Um, you could, because you can write a great curriculum if, if people aren't following it, it's, it's not going to happen. Um. As far as targeted instruction, we talked about that utilization of the wind block, what I need block in the learning lab. Um, whether it's intervention or extension or, you know, enrichment, every student's got something they're working on across all grade levels, and that's for ELA and math. You have, might have some kids, um, that are high flyers too, that are doing something outside of E, ELA or math because of where they are at academically. Um, we talked about targeted instruction for all students, and we, we know that the challenges of not having. Year-round science. Excuse me, um, particularly at Hall. Uh, even though we had some data that, you know, was showing that our kids were, were per- performing just as well as others at, uh, E O Smith. Um, we knew this was, uh, an area of concern for parents in the community. And, and so that's going on right now. It'll be really, really interesting to see with the, the. Curriculum that's in place right now with the Open Sayad model that's being, uh, implemented along with that full, full year science. Uh, what our scores look like in, in the spring this year. And that professional development is, um. I, I, I think it's key. Uh, and I'm, I'm going to go on my soapbox a little bit. I think my, my admin team is tired of hearing me say this, but. I, I, I say it to everyone I can about. Um, expertise, areas of expertise, and. Uh, we have, uh, unless you're in, uh, real specific. Um. Teaching role such as speech and language, you have very specific, um, learning. When you are an elementary teacher, you are. Um, a generalist, you're, you're, when you go through your college program, you're a generalist, and. I, I'm really pushing for a change in that. Um, and this is why we are doing the letters training, because I believe that. When you get, uh, a teacher who graduates and gets their certification, they're expected to be an expert. In teaching literacy. And what we found out in the last couple of years with the science of reading is, um. That wasn't the case anywhere. Um, and so. The science of. Reading. Our, our, take, you know, our professional development and that letters training, um, go hand in hand. And so we have to make sure our teachers have the skills, and we need to provide them the time. To make sure that they get that training, so they can teach reading at a very high level, so we can see the growth that we want to see. Off my soapbox. Um. The rollout, obviously, of the. The rollout, obviously, of the updated curriculum is really important. Um, that we're using illustrative math and we're providing training on that. We've got the math coach that's helping to, to implement that. Um, and again, improving math instruction with that same scope and sequence. Um, that illustrative math is, Erin, what grades is it through now?
I am as K eight.
K eight, all the way through. And so that's something that we have not had. Um, so again, we're looking forward to seeing that over the next couple of years play out. And then the training and implementa- implementation I already mentioned of Open Syed, that model. Um, so a lot of the work that we've been doing is, is important. And Erin, we had a conversation to admin today and Erin and I think we had a really good point about change. Change is never easy and sometimes when you have been doing things a certain way for a long time. Uh, and then you make change, sometimes you're gonna see uh a decrease before things get better. I think that's what twenty-one, twenty-two was for us. I do think that the things that we have in place, whether it's professional development, um, the support of our admin team. Our teachers are working exceptionally hard. Um, they are stretched uh to, to probably as far as we can push them. Um, and they are working hard and, and so we are looking forward to seeing where this work takes us and, and uh the increases in student learning. So um, those are kind of the, the district action steps that uh are in place to see this data change. And again, I always go back to, you know, if I can end on something data-related, Sback is one piece of data. I, I not sure, I always agree that it's the, the most important, high-stakes thing that districts are measured on. You know, when you go on Realtor dot com and you want to see the score of a, a public school, it's on Sback and uh it's not the only thing. There's a lot more that districts offer in, in ways that you can measure success um beyond that specific high-stakes test. Because if Phil's got a cold and Phil's having a bad day and Phil doesn't perform his best becomes public and, 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 and that's not always uh the best measure, so.
Uh, as we're closing, I want to make sure to um reiterate for those who weren't on the call at the very beginning that this is our second data workshop. The other one, if you want to watch the recording on the uh town of Wellington's official YouTube page was under the Board of Education on April twenty-sixth, twenty-two. So we've referred a couple of times to last year, meaning last time we did this data process. We're gonna, we're planning on doing this at least once a year, um, as we look forward to moving ahead on this. But if you haven't already done so, please go back and take a look at that recording as well. Uh Laura?
Yeah, I just with the um, that last slide with, with kind of the action plan and next steps. You mentioned earlier from the question if there's resources that we need to help with the learning loss from the pandemic. And the fact that math learning loss has been the greatest um impact. May- maybe our math scores are better than others, but like across the country, math has been the big one and certainly our math scores are not good. So I was wondering if in that action plan, we should be considering hiring a math interventionist, because you brought that up. So just wondering if that might be something for the board to be thinking about.
And it's a little early, because if that is, that'll be in the budget proposal, um, which we'll see in January. So, but I think it's definitely right for us to be planting that seed, to be thinking about what this might take. Uh, another seed I would want to plant is, do we want to have a more intensive uh summer program to prevent some of that summer slide? Because we, if we lose that much every summer, we can really make a big head uh, off the loss by having some intensive and right now our summer program's very small and very limited. Just a thought, Donna?
I have a slew of thoughts. One is, um, if there's something that should be or could be deleted from some of where the students spend their time, so that it can focus up more on other areas. I don't know if there is something that should or could be deleted, but it should be at least thought about. Um, what, putting together, uh, what parents and guardians can do so that they can be supportive of their student, um, help them head in the right direction. Possibly increasing the number of school days or the length of the school day. Talking to classroom teachers and find out what, what they think needs to be added. Um, I don't know if it's possible, like you talked about the detriment of leaving a child back. But, but maybe if there's a group of kids that are going into fourth grade that really haven't gotten third grade math down, maybe they could all be together so that they're all working on third grade math together. Um, to get them to the point where they can do the fourth grade, um, you know, a little more tailored program. So that they can get to where they need to be. I don't know if the library could do something or community events um for extra enrichment for the kids. And, and you pointed out something um about the teachers. I know in the older grades, the teachers teach a particular, you know, they teach math. They don't need to teach ELA and math. Maybe it's time to consider not necessarily switching the kids, but switching teachers so that the kids have the stability of the same room. But it would take some things off a teacher's plate, so they don't have to be the reading teacher and the math teacher and the science teacher kind of, um, so that they can become better at what they do. And not overwhelm them either. So it could, could be a benefit to the kids and to the teachers. So, and I, and I liked Michelle's suggestion about a, a summer enrichment program, just to help the kids excuse me, either progress to the next level or catch up. Thank you.
I see Tracy's hand is up.
Hi, uh, yeah, along that same line um of Michelle and Donna was talking about some districts that I've worked in. Besides the traditional summer school or extended school year program. They have a, they call it a summer academy where it's just two weeks, either at the beginning, right at the end of the summer, I mean, and end of the school year, maybe usually before July, the last two weeks of June. Students come in and there's just a couple of teachers per grade or even grades might combine a little bit, where they are working on math and reading with students who have don't have um I E Ps but have some need to, to ma- make more growth. It's optional, but it's offered for parents and it's a short term, but extends that amount of instruction they're getting. And then also like um a math club after school, which is a similar kind of thing, but targeted instruction for certain, the areas that they need, but during the school year.
Thanks for bringing that up, Tracy. I know that some districts have had tremendous success with that kind of back-to-school a little early model. Um, what's essential though is that parents know way in advance that that's the timing it's gonna happen. It's uh, the attendance is lower, the less notice they have. If you've booked a vacation in August, then they're not gonna be coming to the Sa- the Summer Academy in August, if that's what you're hoping to do. But um if you let them know ahead of time, they can sometimes change those plans. But without enough notice, it's really not fair to families to, um, you know, let them know at the last moment. So I would urge us to make those decisions earlier rather than later, rather than trying to wait until everything is through one way or the other. Uh Donna?
Yeah, I had another thought kind of linked with what Tracy said and what you just said. Wellington has, in the past, has had a summer day camp. Maybe it would be feasible to embed someone in the summer day camp for some of these areas that need help, where, you know, the kids are already, they're already coming. It's already on the parent's schedule. Um, and it could be in a, not a mandatory, but an additional offering for, you know, a short period, a, a reasonable time during the day and not necessarily every day, but, um, you know, they're already Wellington students and, and that way. So that might be another way to approach it.
I think you're right, that whatever we do, we have to be thinking about what the families need. Um, so for example, a half-day program does not meet parents' needs by providing a half-day program in the summer. If then they have to find wraparound childcare for the other half of the day. Um, but we really also have to be thinking at scale. We can't just do this for the, the forty kids who go to day camp. That's only ten percent of our students. We really have to be, if we want to make a difference in the numbers, we have to do this at scale. So, Brianna?
Hi, um, the Wellington Parks and Rec does offer a really great summer program. I believe it is six weeks long. And my eldest had the opportunity to work there over the summer, which was a great opportunity for her. But because of that, I know that some of the campers did attend um, some kind of summer programming at center in the morning and then were bussed over to high school for the summer camp in the afternoon. Which was an awesome way to combine those two things and offer um childcare for the parents. They also had late pickup hours and early drop-off hours as needed. Um, so that is happening and if we can extend it somehow, like Donna's saying, that would be super, but hopefully then continue, because that was, seemed to be a great matchup to me.
Thanks, Brianna. Herb, you'll have to come off mute. For some reason, it's still on mute. Oh, there we go.
Uh Phil, under the district action plans, we have quite a few items on the plate there. How is this going to be implemented? And also the um professional development aspect of this. Uh, I thought that the professional development days already had things scheduled. How are you gonna work the new items that are listed here into the program?
So those are, those are new. They're built in already. That's what we've been working on uh as part of our long-term plan. So if I'm looking at that, um, the district action steps, really, the, the piece that you're talking about, I think, is the, is professional development. The things that are on here are happening. We're providing on the half-days, like we have a, a, a earlier, an early release this Friday. Uh, we just went through the, the final draft today admin about what's going on. Uh, teachers have time to do the letters training, so they have to, we have to give them time to do it if we want them to do it. Um, and that's what we've identified. So we've given, we are giving them time to do those things. Um, this Friday, we have some of our science teachers are working through some of the new labs and, and the curriculum committee uh saw what it takes to roll out one of those labs at their last meeting. Um, it's significant. So tho- these things are are happening. I'm gonna be honest with you, not as necessarily as a result of Sback, but because we know the direction we need to go. We know, need to make sure, um, our, our teachers are highly trained and have the tools and curriculum they need to uh do their job well. And I think that when you improve instruction um through professional development and then it's meaningful, it's ongoing and that there's good feedback and there's support from coaches. Um, that's where we're gonna see growth. I don't mean to be a naysayer about the summer programs, because I think the wraparound program is good. But I know Marsha McGinley's got a speech bubble o- off her head, um, where she's worked really hard to recruit kids to come to summer school, to extra programming. Uh, you need the right kids there. Um, and sometimes they just say no, because those kids have worked extra hard, they need a break too. So I think we have to target a lot of things. Summer's one of the pieces. Uh, tutoring could be one of those pieces. Making sure kids have appropriate interventions in school uh during the dirt, during the school day is important. The best thing you can do though, is make sure you have highly qualified, trained teachers in what you're asking them to do. And this, I will tell you, the, the staff screamed from the rafters for many years. We need an updated curriculum. We need this curriculum to, to do our jobs well. And we're getting there. Um, I wish the scores were better than they are, but we're, we're at the, you know, we're almost to the top of that hill, I feel like. Uh, and you know, with Erin a year and a half in at this point in time. We're, we're getting there.
Okay.
Okay, and with that, we are a little over time of what we had um booked for tonight, but shorter than a typical board of ed meeting, since we were able to focus on just one topic. Um, this is not the last of these types of meetings that we will be doing. Um, but again, data is something that we have to continuously monitor over time. And uh, you know, makes sense for us only to have these when we have new data to discuss that's meaningful. If it were just one data point, we could toss that into a regular meeting. Um, but we will at least try and do these once a year, I think, for a while to uh help us all learn more about where we are with things. With that, um, I think we are ready to adjourn, unless there's any last minute comments. Okay, not seeing any. Uh, I move that we adjourn the meeting for this evening. Is there a second?
A second.
Laura, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You're adjourned. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
Eight.
Bye, everybody.
Eight twenty-six P M. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your time.